Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
I've got 6:30, we'll call, uh, Mark the Town Council meeting to order. How was your day?
So I told Tom that, yeah, I learned some, but yet there's still a lot up in the air.
Maybe for a while, go ahead and learn some of what they're talking about.
So, I just wish that they would be very papered follow if they do get around with that.
Got you.
I thought we had, I thought we said it.
No. We're throwing you off, we're just gradually giving them back to you.
I didn't see it, I couldn't see the updates, I was like, no.
See, we approved claims for the town in the amount of $2,113.77, and for the water department, $8,196.87. Brady was gonna be here, I was gonna start with the ordinance violations that he's filed, you have anything at all waiting on the court?
So, the only ones I, I'm aware of are King, Franklin, Lawhorn, and Aguilar, are the four I'm aware of, are there supposed to be other ones?
I think that should cover it.
Okay.
Who's the last one?
Franklin, King, Lawhorn, and Aguilar, which is...
Thanks, darling.
Oh.
To my knowledge, those are the only four ones we have pending.
Okay, those are the ones I haven't talked to him about.
Okay.
I think the King has been out there for a good while.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask him to give me some updated pictures of it though.
Okay.
So, I haven't talked to him right now.
The last time I went through the, no King.
There's not much I can do with Franklin, so.
Actually, she has been quite well, yeah, really has.
Okay, well.
It's amazing from what it was before.
It's appreciated what they've...
Good. But the, uh, the Lawhorns set for the 29th of this month, and Aguilar's set for January 23rd.
Okay.
So, way of portaging and all that.
I don't know if Brady's had contact with all of those.
They were both supposed to be reaching out to them, based on my conversation with them, so.
Okay. That's old business that I have, is there anything that you have, might for old business?
Probably. Okay, I can update you on the ballparks if you want.
Perfect.
So, we applied officially to the foundation for a $12,000 grant, that would be half of the expense to do both ballparks, the one here and the one with Blimmingdale, they have their meeting December 12th, and we'll find out whether we did it or not.
Is that 12,000 combined, or 12,800?
Total, 12,000 total, because we've raised 12,000 through the youth association. So, we just asked them that they would match it, which, foundation traditionally will do a matching grant a lot of times, and so we went ahead and raised half of it, hoping they would match the other half. And if they do that, we have all of our funds in place to do both ballparks then. And we have RMC lined up to set our pulse for us, they can't do it till the spring though. And then, we have a... Word escapes me, Works on Electricity, uh, no, uh...
Oh, car, Riley.
Riley Car, um, set up to install the electrical for us. So it's, big days, you know, them granting that, because if they do that, we'll have all our work in a row then. So then we'll be able to order our lights and parts and everything. We did have a good day, the community foundation had their fall dinner, and Brad Kraykraft for the youth association attended, and he was one of the ones that drew, they did a raffle, or a drawing, and then you got to, um, hit a button, and it did a Wheel of Fortune thing, you get to award a certain amount of money, and...
Oh wow.
He got $2,500 for the youth association. So, that's money we'll be able to use at the ballparks also. But, so it looks like those things are gonna happen, as long as they're willing to match what we've raised, so, so we'll be getting the lights.
Are those lights LEDs?
They're gonna be LEDs, yeah, they're stadium style LED lights though. So, and we're using the same provider that did the lights at Rosedale, so we've kinda seen them in action. Rosedale, we did their lights about two years ago, maybe a year ago, and they gave us their contact info for their provider, so. Should be really nice, and with him getting that extra money, we might have some extra money to do some other things there, so.
I looked at that bleacher page that you sent to me, uh, just for a reference point, and I've been looking at for used bleachers even, thinking that somebody may have some of those. Your thoughts on how many additional seating units would need? I mean, you've got a lot of cars up there, right?
That's, 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 I mean, there's quite a bit of turnout for those ballgames, if you haven't been to one, I mean, there's down each side, people lined up, a lot of them are in, um, you know, fold-out chairs and things like that. We have a meeting next Thursday for the youth association, so I guess I can see what they think, but I would say at least, you know, the one I sent you for each side, at least, if not two of them for each side, would be my thoughts, but...
Yeah.
I mean, that's kinda what I think anyway.
Most of those companies will tell you how many people they hold.
Yeah.
Most of the ones that we've looked at, if you send me the portal.
Yeah.
Kinda iffy on where the portal was the best way to go, because if somebody wants to be up there vandalized, they can move the portal.
We don't have anywhere to store them either.
Right. And I suppose even the portals could be affixed in the ground, actually, with something. But I think that would be another plus. Along the same lines, have you been able to work on any of the agreement for that?
I, I haven't yet, when I was doing those ordinances, it was the next thing I was gonna do, but I just kinda got a little blind on things. But it'd be, it'd be a simple easement, just a 10-foot wide easement that runs along the edge of the property line that allows us to access the property. And as long as they're willing to sign it, it shouldn't be anything significant.
Yeah, they, Eric gave me that.
Typically, it costs $35 to record an easement, so, so it won't be a lot of cost.
Okay.
And I can draft it, so that won't be a problem, but I haven't done that yet, I did have it on my checklist of things to do though.
And that's something that board will have to take a look at, look at the cost to have, say for instance, Humac come in and take that saw down, put all that stone in for parking, be able to get back for, I know that drive, and you remember back from the day, that's all was gravel at one time. One time, it was all stone, yeah. So, there's a basin there, for sure. So there's a cost, of course, to that.
Oh yeah.
We'll wait and see how some of the budgets come out, whether or not we have some money to prove and live over to that. Very, thank you. Give you anything else under old?
Uh, no, that was the only thing I had under old. Yeah.
Okay. Under new business, I did talk to Jason Ryan about the Christmas decorations, but the arch, they were damaged a little bit last year from those high winds, you know, that one just...
It was the year before, it was the year before last?
Yeah. So the plan is tonight, it'll be discussed at the fire meeting. Hopefully, that we can get those over to the firehouse, make those repaired, because they're minor repairs, it's not, not huge. And then hopefully get those up in the next week.
The soldiers?
The soldiers, I'm sorry, yes.
And I need to get with Janice too, and see if we can get some of that stuff, she was gonna see if there were some old decorations still, because we took that Santa Claus and that, those things, she thought maybe they might, I don't know if she's got a chance to kinda snoop around to see if there was any more to kinda...
I don't know if she did or not, I know she, that pump went out.
Yeah.
Did that, the plugs are out of the...
Okay.
Power, yeah. We left those set there last year, I probably remember.
Yeah, we did.
And they, they seem to be fine. As far as decorations, are we good, or...
We're pretty good, I mean, unless we add something, I don't know if there's money to really add anything, or... Because I was kinda wanting to see what old stuff we kinda have, if we could pull something out.
Yeah, the deer keep getting blown around, uh, we were at Crawfordville today, and home people had deer like that, but they're like $90 apiece for those.
That was on Amazon, I think it was. I don't know how I found it in that time, because a lot of people asked me, because they wanted it.
Oh, I know, because they're nice sized ones, I mean, they're decent size for...
I think it was, I think it was either Amazon or LTD, that I was just a whim, that when I got those, that I wouldn't expect them to be as big or as nice as what they were for what I paid for. And they lasted except for, because we had it up here for a while before we did, I put it in the other thing.
Yeah.
So, and they just weren't working out.
I didn't think they held up too bad last year, really, though, because I think the pole kinda helped.
Yeah.
I think it was just the lights on that one wasn't quite, but we worked on that.
And I think, yeah, I think they're definitely usable.
Yeah.
Could be the string lights and...
Yeah, could. That'd be pretty simple. So, uh, so you've communicated with Jan?
Well, we did, when I was putting out that we were doing the fall stuff, kind of, and to see, so I'll reach out to her and see, because I was trying to see if maybe this weekend.
I think it's still all over in the...
It is, it's all put over there in that shed, but I was gonna reach, um, we do decent, trying to get something this weekend out, and what you guys got going on, because I don't know if those lights, all of them, the wind kinda took some of the lights out of that tree, they're kinda not lighting.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Well, it's kind of our hope to get those soldiers up this weekend. Might have some bodies. We have two ordinances that Nick has prepared for us to look at, possibly act on. One is an ordinance prohibiting temporary occupancy of mobile dwelling units in the town of Marshall. The second one is an ordinance prohibiting tampering with the water system. Is there anything you wanna, I might pass them around, let him read these, of course, but...
They're per day offenses, so, um, once they're notified, they have a time to cure, um, but it's no balls per day of the offense. Indiana has a law that doesn't allow you to fine anybody more than $2,500 for the first offense on an ordinance violation. So the one for tampering with the water system is set up, at least, that what I thought might be the town's wish is for it to be a sum up to $2,500 on the first offense. The other one is tailored after kinda what Rockville does, um, on the mobile home dwellings. It says that unless you're licensed through the state as a campground, that you're not allowed to have a temporary or permanent mobile home dwelling within the town. The carve-out being that if you're registered as a campground through the health department, you can be. To my knowledge, we don't have people that are in town.
So, so getting back at them, Nick, I said we're talking about mobile home, but we're kinda referring to camper mobile home?
Camper or a mobile shack?
Which is it?
Well, I've laid out everything that qualifies in there, there's a whole list of them.
Okay.
You know, yard barn, shack, camper, RPD, mobile home.
Okay, I guess, the thing I tried to add was, you know, if I bought a camper, I might go camping with it, I can't keep it in my driveway?
You can't live in it in your driveway.
You just can't make it your...
That's right, you're dwelling.
It can't be temporary or permanent.
You can't go stay in your camper in the backyard.
So it, it has definitions in it that defines what we're looking at there, as far as what's temporarily staying in it and things like that. I guess if you guys like that, we can read it and see, but, uh, but yeah, I gave a definition section at the start of it saying specifically what this applies to.
We have two in town that's like that.
But it has a per day fine, um, it, I believe it was $50 per day, or 25 to 50, depending on, you know, the fence. And, but it's per day, so once you've been notified, and if you choose to stay there for 30 days, it snowballs every single day.
So this covers pre-existing?
If it's passed, it will become law here, and I even, and that one I cited to the statute, it gives us the authority to do it, which is the Home Rule Statute for Indiana, which is like 36-3-something-one, maybe? But it says that towns have the ability to govern themselves under Indiana code, so. Because what I hear a lot of times is people say, well, you know, I live in Indiana, and you guys can't tell me what to do? Well, that statute, if you live in a town, does give the towns the authority to govern themselves, so.
And on the water, does that mean that this is, I was kinda just glancing over, so you, basically, you couldn't run a hose from your neighbor's house to your house?
I, I didn't...
Do you use your water system?
Wasn't that more set up that they couldn't get in and mess with the meter?
This is more tampering, yeah.
Do that?
It is on my list to look at, I haven't had a chance to research that, though, this I know we're allowed to do.
That's why I was like, I wasn't noticing anything to kind of...
So when, when I do these, I have to do quite a bit of research, just to see what we're allowed to do.
Right.
What other communities are doing, I haven't had a chance to look at the connecting part with the hoses.
That's just when I threaten the people that's been in their meters, that they're not supposed to be there.
Right, that's why I was like, looking, it's like, it's kinda just, seems like it's just has to do with the meter.
Yeah, it's going in, if your meter's been shut off, and going in, turning it back on, or, you know, turning a different meter back on, so you can use it, um, or if we locked it and you cut the lock. Generally, you're not supposed to get in a meter pit anyway in Indiana, if you're not part of the municipal utility provider. But this would be an ordinance that... The other one, I, I started researching it, but I haven't got to a spot where I really feel comfortable with language on it yet, so.
Okay.
But the, uh, the temporary dwelling part, that's what we have in Rockville, is what I'm using there, because I'm familiar with it, so.
And you said that includes those little sheds that they...
I, I think it'd be best if we just read what I defined it as, and I can do that once you guys have a chance to look at it, but... But yeah, it's meant to yard barn sheds.
Shacks, I see shacks, okay, considered that.
Yeah. Anything temporary in nature, basically. Now, these wouldn't go into effect until they've been published, and 30 days have passed, so, either one of them.
So they have to first appear. I don't know what ordinance numbers are on right now.
I, I didn't write in a ordinance, because I wasn't sure, but...
I'd have to see.
Yeah, before we publish it, I'll have to put one in, but I just want you guys to have something to look at, since we've been talking about it.
We did it last ordinance, you remember, a month ago?
I find what it utilized. With the water, it was somewhere?
I'll have it somewhere.
I mean, I, yeah, I'd go back to and look and see too.
But I was just trying to, you know, look at other communities, look at what the law allows us to do, Indiana code-wise, and kind of put something down for us to start off with.
Right.
Obviously, the fines, there's, can be more, can be less, but it can't be more than $2,500. Tampering with the water system, I view it as a serious offense, so that's why...
Yeah, expense on the town itself.
Right, or danger to other users, so.
Yeah.
And the other one, most communities have it as a daily occurrence issue, as far as doing that. And we've ran into that in Rockville before, as far as temporary living in campers and things like that, so.
So you wanna read these?
Yeah.
So does that have to have to do with temporary, and then like...
Yeah.
Would, would he be okay under?
Kathy asked about a person in town that is living in their camper as they're rehabbing their house. We have that authority?
I was getting ready to ask that question.
I mean, do we have that authority to allow that for a certain amount of time?
You guys do, um, and one way we could change that is to give a limited basis timeframe.
Yeah, it does read that, that's drifted right there.
Yeah, so I mean, we could say you have this amount of time on a temporary basis, and it, it's a one-time thing. But I wasn't certain where you wanted to head with that, so that's why I didn't put a timeframe in there.
Yeah, I mean, somebody could say, I'm, I'm working on it, and...
Right.
Put one nail in in six months.
That's why I think setting a deadline is...
And then once you end up and you get them established, they think once it's approved, they kind of like, think you're gonna forget about it, and...
So I think the water tampering's a lot easier one, because you just opt not to be doing it. This one, it might be good if we laid out a timeframe, if it's, you know, on a temporary basis, I didn't really go into that a whole lot in it, so.
I'll give him credit, he's working on that place, dude.
Yes, he is.
They put the gas to it today, they burn gas on him, back during the day, turn the gas on, and everything.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
He's working on it.
That's not our intent, to stop somebody from implementing improvements, that's what we want.
Saving a home, I think it's...
Yes. So I mean, it's not like he's just camping back or not doing anything for them, honestly, so.
So it might be one of those things that we put in language indicates, because I've seen them, but where they've given six months, or 90 days, or things like that, for that purpose, I didn't put in this one yet, but we could add it.
But with that, would they end up in, but we're towns, we really don't, well, we do kinda have a permit, because if they had a camper, would they end up, and they're doing like a building, or would they need like a permit? Would that help?
Well, so, it would, we could put language in it, and that indicates that they have to get, um, written permission, and I'd recommend giving a timeline on it, though.
Right.
Because we did that on some things for Rockville before, where if they were doing construction or things like that, they had a certain timeframe they could do it within, so that's something we could add to it.
Okay.
They did, they're six months now.
The, uh, so the ordinance prohibiting tampering with the water system, just says, "Be it ordained by the council of the town of Marshall, Indiana, as follows, the purpose of this ordinance is to prohibit tampering with the water system. For the purpose of this chapter, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. Jump or any device or system used or intended to supply water from the town water supply to any structure, person, or entity without said water being processed by a proper metering device. Proper metering device means equipment owned by the town that measures the water passing through and out of the town water system. Tampering with the water system, be it turned to a turn, any portion of the town water system on or off, or otherwise change or damage it. Town water supply would be the water in any part of the town water system. Town water system would be all pipes, lines, joints, tanks, hydrants, wells, water treatment plant, and all related parts used to supply public water to users. Town would be the town of Marshall, Park County, Indiana. Administration would be the town council of the town of Marshall, Indiana. Shall be the executive department of the town responsible for the administration of this ordinance." And it says Article 1, "It shall be unlawful for any person or other employees of the water utility of the town to act within the scope of their employment or any other person or persons specifically authorized by the water utility to block any water usage from being read, to open a meter pit lid, enter a meter pit, or in any manner to turn with a water meter or attempt to heat a meter pit or meter. The clerk treasurer of the town of Marshall shall inform any individual in violation of this ordinance by written notice or the town marshal may. The individual shall have 48 hours to correct the ordinance violation. Any person who violates this ordinance shall be fined a sum not to exceed $5,000. A separate offense shall be committed for each day of the violation." It does allow for injunction, in addition to the penalty provided by Article 3, or, Article 3 above, the town shall be entitled to an injunction enjoining any further violation of this ordinance. And it does allow for the town to recoup attorney fees if it is needed to enforce this ordinance. It's how we have that set up, so.
Uh, one quick clarification, that, that covers the entire water system, whether it's in the city limits or...
We can only enforce things inside the town limits with the ordinance.
Are there laws that would prohibit any of that at the pump house, the hydrants coming into town?
Generally, Indiana code has statutes in it, the major crime to tamper, like, it could be criminal mischief, for instance, or, um, you know, depending on what they did to criminal mischief, so when it comes to Miami, and somebody goes in there and messes with it, or writes graffiti on it, or tears it up in some manner, it could be a criminal crime. This is more designed to prohibit people from going in there and turning their water back on or off.
But even though it's our line with the ones outside of town?
Ordnance is only governing things within the town limits.
Well, we have some customers, of course, outside of the town. Is there any way to make that work for us, other than...
We could assess a penalty against them, I suppose, for the utility service provision, so that, that we provide the utility to them, and so if they, we could make it such that if you tamper with it, it's, you know, from the business end of it, as compared to an ordinance. Would be my thoughts on that. Any extra charge would be attached to you if it's found that you have been...
Right.
Do we have that in our water ordinance fees?
Yeah.
If you tamper with it?
That's, that's something I can really think of, barring looking at it from a criminal mischief point of view. Or theft or conversion.
Well, the violations haven't occurred within town, like, among we've experienced over the last few years?
So with ordinances, it's confined to within town limits, but if they're, if they're tearing it up, it's gonna be a criminal, and we can sue them civilly for destruction of property too. It's just, ordinance is like you levy a fine on them, and so to fine them, they have to be within town limits. Doesn't mean if they tamper with it, we can't sue them civilly for the damages done. And we are, like she said, we already have something in their building part, I wasn't aware you had that, but that's the other way to do it, is if they're dealing, you impose a fee on them for having that. But yeah, this would just be inside town limits, if they go in there and turn it on or turn it off, or things like that, when they're not supposed to be. The other one is an ordinance, um, as we talked about, prohibiting temporary occupancy of a mobile dwelling unit... Um, the other one is the ordinance, um, as we talked about prohibiting temporary occupancy of a mobile dwelling unit in the town of Marshall. Be ordained by the town council of the town of Marshall, Indiana, and upon passage of this ordinance, do publication as required by IC five dash three dash one. That whereas IC thirty-six dash one dash three at AL, which just means in its entirety, the town council of Marshall, Indiana, has the power to regulate the rules of law and governance within town limits as long as it's not specifically prohibited by the Indiana Code constitution or statute or said powers specifically vested in another entity. And whereas the town council of Marshall, Indiana, has determined that need exists for ordinance codifying the rules and regulations governing the use of mobile dwellings, campers, and other forms of temporary housing in town of Marshall, Indiana, therefore be ordained as follows. And it gives a definition, for the purpose of this ordinance, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates requires a different meaning. Mobile dwelling unit shall be defined to mean temporary living quarters such as house trailers, truck bodies, tents, bus bodies, shacks, campers, yard barns, RVs, and improvised trailers, which may need be moved by tractor, truck, or automobile, or those carried, transferred, or towed from one place to another without the use of regular house moving equipment. Use for temporary living quarters is defined as including the acts of sleeping, preparation of meals, or any sanitary measures such as bathing, dishwashing, or laundry, uh, clothing, or any natural or performed operation that produces waste material objectionable from a nuisance standpoint. Um, temporary occupancy is prohibited, no person shall occupy a mobile dwelling unit which has been placed on any lot, street, or any space within the corporate limits of the town for the purpose of using the same as a temporary or permanent living quarters, except those in campsites or campgrounds approved and licensed as a campsite by the state board of health. Um, and then it has a section, notice to vacate if failure. Any peace officer of the town or any representative of the state board of health or any state police officer shall have the right to issue an order in writing requiring violators of this chapter remove mobile dwelling units from unlicensed premises within forty-eight hours. Um, then the third section has non-interference with state board of health powers. Just says that no provisions in this ordinance shall interfere with the right of the state board of health to revoke any license for failure to comply with the provisions of IC sixteen forty-one twenty-seven or other applicable laws. So it's just saying that it doesn't trump anything that the state board of health is entitled to do. It's not taking any of their rights away. Penalty spread the violation, any violation of this ordinance shall upon conviction be punished by a fine not less than twenty-five dollars and not more than fifty dollars per day. No notice will be required for those persons violating this ordinance after the first offense. And each day's violations shall constitute a separate offense. Meaning we initially have to give them notice, but if they continue to not comply, we're not required to give them a notice every single day that they're not complying. Um, it says the attorney fees, any person found by a court to violate this ordinance shall pay costs in reasonable attorney fees incurred by the town as is all the town enforcement of this ordinance. Um, effective date, this ordinance shall become effective upon passage and legal publication as required by IC five dash three dash one. Um, so what that one says is you have to publish it and then thirty days have to pass for it to become effective. Um, so the mobile dwelling part, I tried to lay out everything that I thought we were dealing with as far as from that perspective. Um, you could put in there language that says that if, you know, you're doing construction or your house burns down or something of a temporary nature is there, you're allowed to have such and such period of time. Um, I don't know what that looks like for you guys as far as how much time you think is reasonable or not. I've seen six months before, um.
It could be extended by, like, the board's approval or something.
That's what I was trying to figure.
You could put exception language in there, it says that, you know, you can't be granted an exception in writing by the board for various reasons. I was just trying to get thoughts down on paper for you guys to kind of think about on both of these, really.
And that will take effect with, nothing will be like grandfather clause then because it's already there.
That's why I was asking.
Right, I, I don't have it set up for grandfather anybody yet, and I suppose you can do that if you wanted to, but.
Well, no, because that would defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do.
You're not required to, I guess is what I'm telling you. But they're not technically in violation until they've been given notice or an opportunity to cure their violation.
Right. I, I think the idea of just like you said, having some kind of a language so that way if it's, like you said, a case of a burn down or if you end up and say you've sold your house, you don't have this one totally finished and you're still working on it, you've got a temporary, but it's only so many months and then it needs to be reevaluated, you need to come to the board and say.
Right, okay.
Do we need to put, you have to have some type of a permit, apply for some type of a permit for temporary housing?
Then that way you can track it.
Permit from the town.
Right.
But if you're just gonna remodel, you wouldn't, you know.
Remodeling, you wouldn't.
Because you're not adding any.
You're not adding anything specific, he doesn't have one. Is he not building anything?
That's, I think that's a gray area because if you're remodeling and you change anything, put a deck on, that's a building permit issue. So if you're not, you could just be working inside the core of the house.
It'd be new structures or new exterior parts.
But if you've already got a deck and you're just fixing what you already had, you already had that, you're not making any changes.
Right.
Yeah. But if you're tripling the size of your deck, the purpose of the building permit is to make sure you're not over the town utilities or anyone else.
Oh, it's a protection for them, but it also protects the neighbor's property of interest.
Yeah.
Right.
That's why we did that one.
Well, I would like to see that we have some kind of a clause there that, uh, the board can make an exception or to.
To the board discrepancy, you know.
Yeah.
Discrepancy of the board, you know.
But it, it also, had somebody said, can't say, well, I'm remodeling and then six months later, they haven't done anything.
Exactly.
You, you put that timeline in there and then.
Then they need to come back and revalue, have to come back to the board and see if they can have it extended.
All right, so I, I can work on adding that language to it, um.
I think as far as the, the water meter pit, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
If, if and when we face the issue that somebody's tampering with the hydrants coming into town, which I think is probably a, a fire thing, that they probably, there's probably something out there in statute for that.
I, I, so I, I think there's an Indiana code part about tampering with the pits as well, but, um, most towns have adopted something similar to this as a finable offense also. Because, um, criminal actions are left to the discretion of the prosecutor and the sheriff's department, things like that. This would give us a civil way of enforcing to protect our own interest.
Okay.
The only thing I could tell you is that it might be one of those things where we want to add the language for use of somebody else's water into this particular ordinance, since we already have this ordinance addressing the water pits. They kind of seem to line up together, it's just I didn't have the research done on that when I drafted this at that point. So it could be one where we add that to this before they pass it. But that'd be as soon as the next meeting, it's just.
Okay.
Online for one household, one?
Well, I think the logistics to that is when that rating ordinance is, is calculated, it's calculated that you're paying for your water, but you're also paying for the service lines, you're paying for the meter.
Just for that.
And so if you split off of it, this person over here is, is getting the best of.
They're bypassing this.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if you say one per lot or one per, I'm not.
It'd be one per dwelling.
I guess it could be one per dwelling. I'll let, let you.
I, so I, I mean, I, I did start looking at that, it's just I didn't come up with anything I thought was pretty important on it, um.
Does Rockville let them attach?
So it has language about potable water and, um, using hoses and things like that and it being prohibited if it's being merged with the water system. Uh, but I, I didn't like the wording on it very well, uh, so that's why I didn't want to use it.
The other piece of that is if you're running a hose from your neighbor over to your dwelling, you have no backflow prevention.
Right, that's why they were talking about potable water.
So that, yeah, that has to be addressed.
Yeah, which I have language on it, it's just, I'm looking for better language. Uh, I like to put things in terms where I think people are gonna understand it. And the language in that one was drafted a long, long time ago, and so you, and you'd have to read it about six times to get the gist of it. Some people might not ever get the gist of it, but, but yeah, I have language to that respect. But, so I kind of thought that might go with this water system tampering part was my thought on it.
Yeah, because it's end up and it's gonna eventually, it could cause problems. If that line freezes and busts and then the homeowner's line busts because their hose, then you got a leak problem, they'll try to be in the meter to turn off the water.
Then we don't have ten ordinances on water, we can have one that we're referring to. But I just wanted to add something so we could kind of tweak it a little bit and get the language we liked, so. So I'll add language to the one on the, the mobile dwellings, um, as to exceptions to be allowed by the town council in writing, um, under emergency or exceptional purposes and try to lay out what those would be. And then on this one, I'll try to get us some language as far as, you know, using your neighbor's faucet and prohibited, prohibited, or prohibitions on that. Um, but yeah, Rockville did have one on the books, it's just fixing that old English wording, so.
Other comments, questions about that? So we'll be able to act on that next?
Yeah, I just, I'll tweak this one and then that one, I'll finish my research on that and add that language in.
Okay, great. Uh, Nick, you have anything else for us tonight?
Um, we talked about the easement, I still need to work on that. That's, that's all I had on my list unless I'm forgetting something, but. We talked about the ord, tampering, we talked about the campers, talked about the, um, connecting to the neighbor's water, ingress egress easement for the ball field, talked about the four ordinance violations, which was really three because Franklin's not, we're not proceeding on it, so, um. And I, I talked to Brady about the King's property, that's really the only thing I need to do on it, is kind of get update from him on whatever I had on it, so.
You guys have anything else before you move on it?
Uh-uh.
Kathy? Um, I would like to hear something on that meeting that you.
Yeah, I sat through a two-hour Zoom meeting the other day on the lead requirements. And still a lot of questions about who's gonna pay for it. But the main thing they were focusing on really right now was getting the input and getting the service addresses entered, finding out the age of the homes, which I never thought that I could go under the Park County map and go in there and see if I could find the age of the homes, because that's gonna help. And there's a lot of columns which we have, yeah. And it said the more the columns you could fill in, the better the end result down the road is gonna be.
Okay.
So they said if you can find that out, um, the year the houses were built, a lot of times that's on there, have all your service addresses. Which, we pretty much have a listing of every service address, so, and then you can get started and start eliminating. Which ones do you know, were they built at such and such time and can you know for sure they have no lead? Kind of go down through that list and just start trying to eliminate what you can, what you can't. Um, but they had some new laws that had just come through, just like the day before, and they were trying, it was like a six-hundred page. And they said they were trying to read through them and to try and help, so, you know, it's like, how are they doing that and still putting all this stuff out? And they said there will be no deadline, or there will be no extension, it is October.
They've got a meeting next month, uh, too, the twenty-first or the twelfth, I don't wish.
Who does?
Fred Van Grumman does on that. Because they're up against that problem, what you was talking about, and they're going to try to make a determination. I, I should have printed that off, there's a big article on it, and had it on television Sunday morning too.
Did they?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't know how these big, I don't know how Indianapolis, Chicago, these places can get it done, because I think we have a hundred and fifty-five, fifty-six. I can imagine in Rockville to get started, but when you get into these big cities with all these high rises and all of these apartment complexes and following all of your lines, I just, I understand the end result, I get it. I get with the lead and they gotta get it out of there, but at the same time, I'm like, you know, how do you go about this and find out? They're even talking about all your connectors.
They still installed lead line up to the year nineteen eighty.
And they were saying nineteen eighty-seven, they thought was a definite line, guideline. And they're saying the best.
There were a few I missed, but nineteen eighty for sure.
And they said the best thing to use was a magnet. They said the best thing to use is a magnet.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
And so they said there's all these expensive things that are coming out now that you can buy and things, but they said if you can get to the pipe, use a magnet.
But the thing of this is the town is, as a water person, are we only responsible to get to the house?
They're not.
They've, they've not outlined that.
No definition.
Not yet, that's the question, they said always before, that, uh, you know, it was our responsibility to the meter, and then from there on, it's the customer's, because then that's the other question, okay, if you find out they have lead, have lead, who's paying for it? And they're saying to go dig up holes to try if you don't know, but they said that you gotta go back, you gotta fill them in, you gotta seed them, you gotta fix them the way they work, and who's expensive? Now, they talk like there's a lot of meters in the basements, did you get, have you seen notice out on anything? Like, just have the people go to their basement, see what pipes are coming in, I think, okay, well, we have crawl spaces, but are we supposed to tell our people to go crawl their crawl spaces?
I think we only have one meter on the inside.
Right, but, I mean, so that.
I'm guessing they'll be testing, we can test at the, at the sink.
But they said testing's gotta be out there, but it's not gonna be a hundred percent acceptable.
Yeah, there's still a lot of unbilled, yes.
That was something they said. So they said there's still a lot of unknowns. So I thought, my theory is get my list made out, with all these service addresses, all of my current names, see if I can go onto the Park County map, find out what year they were built, get that stuff made in the spreadsheet.
Right, that way at least you got some of that homework out of the way.
Right.
Because it sounds like it's gonna be crunch time when.
Right, well, because once first year starts, I have to go on my big end report. So once I get that out of the way for the government, then I thought I could start working on this, it's gonna be bad weather, so I can sit in there and I could work on that all my days, but I'm not in Rockville.
What do you think about, uh, getting some proposals from engineering companies to do that? Because they're now doing that for some communities and towns. Here's what you're saying, I have no idea what the cost is.
I thought I was wondering what's the cost.
But they'll have all of the, the paperwork, everything online, they'll be able to do that rather than you chasing your tail as a thought. Now, if it's a yard in price, then I don't, I don't see it as meaningful to do. Tom, do you think it's possible between now and October?
Kathy can do it, I gotta pay them.
Kathy said that, so perfect.
My end is the computer end.
Well, the thing about it, you, you have a service address for all.
Yeah.
So basically, you're needing to hear the structure built approximately and that line's led or not, I mean.
They're saying you need to apply the information from the assessor's office when they.
Well, you, you can go on the Park County, there's a Park County map.
Okay.
Well, they're saying go forward, but you can go on the Park County map on each person and call up the property and it shouldn't tell you like.
You could get the property.
House, maybe what year it was built, and so, and I never thought of that.
Worried about to the pit.
But.
It's between the pit and further on.
Right.
Because at that point, you're entering private property.
That's what I, I swear to.
And I don't see how.
And that's liability.
Yeah, how there's any solution, and being a hole in somebody's yard, it, it's not the easiest thing to defend.
No, then you're acting on A-one-one all over the place.
Well, it sounds like they have no answers to those questions.
No.
So I don't know how they think they're gonna penalize people for not doing things that they have no answers to.
Right.
What are you gonna do with it, people still have wells? Are we responsible for that?
That was another thing there that I took, they were talking about, is your wells are gonna have to be addressed too.
And whose responsibility would that be then?
See, that's why I wasn't sure who's responsible, because I, I was thinking about like Todd's mom and dad and Mary Ann and those guys, they're all on wells, someone's.
We've got well, someone on well.
I guess some life.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that's just not on our line.
If we've gone as far as having a list of the ones we know aren't lead, and then we have the ones where we're not sure if they're lead or not, we're probably still gonna be ahead of the game for most of those.
Right, right.
So I can't imagine we're gonna be the biggest concern for them.
Do you have a sheet, the checklist, the form that they say?
I can get on to, uh.
One-twenty-one, or EWS.
Yeah, they've got everything there for us, they'll help us if we need, and they said they'll do the rest.
So what a great resource for, you know, Tom's right there to roll up his sleeves on. So what a great resource for, you know, Todd's right there to roll up his sleeves on.
Sorry, I'm digging.
And that's what, and I, I don't know how much help it would be, I wondered if Jason's girls would be good to, okay, look at this and give me an answer, and, you know, because it made me take a couple, three people to sit there and look at mine, I don't know. I don't know until I get into it and see. So, because we're gonna have to get started with, you know, getting that address out there, physical address out there, which is all we have.
Yeah, but a lot of people knows what they got coming around, so I do, I got polyvinyl.
But I, we have to have proof.
Take a picture of the damn thing.
If you, yeah.
You can't think you're gonna get everybody to take a picture.
Cause they're right, see it right there, the house got usually been down there.
And you had work orders from people that had recent work done, they would take the work order saying, this was replaced, this was done in this year.
Well, it was never been replaced, well, it's been there originally.
So. But I, yeah, I think it's like, I think they're up there too, they know it needs done, I think they're grabbing straws and I said, people are asking questions. They were like, how do you know what service address is? I'm thinking, do you not know your service addresses? How do you work on anything? You know, every single thing in ours has a service address. Now, I think the ballpark maybe doesn't actually have a service address. Because I thought about that later, but everybody else is, but they also said any disconnected lines. And I wondered like places like Rainbow that doesn't have any water anymore and.
Oh yeah, because you gotta be able to ID them, so you just can't go turn it on and.
So I wondered about people like that, how that's.
We've got lots of the meters, pit is still there.
One right there beside me.
And see, do they have an, are they on the actual water line that has water going to that? See, I wondered if that would be.
They'd have a jumper in there probably, but they just had a pit.
Is he like the one in the northern town, we took it out?
There was one right beside my house. I know that meter still in there. Your house I tore down on North Side.
The meter's still there?
Was last time I looked.
We gotta get, I mean, we gotta get rid of that in that case you shut it off, because.
Kathy could use that meter, it still works.
Well, I was thinking if there's a leak there, we wouldn't have any way, no, they'd be reading it. So like I said, to me, there were still a lot of if ands and buts, they're trying to.
What, what's your preference to, to start in and see what the ammo looks like?
I think that's what. Because I, I mean, I don't, I hate to go spend a bunch of money because it's gonna be expensive.
It might be nice just to kind of get an idea of what the cost would be to get an engineer because the way it sounds, it's gonna be last minute, so there's gonna be a lot of changes and updates and how are you gonna, you as a person, when you're trying to do all this, gonna keep updated on what the new changes are? Just, there's a chance you could miss something.
So.
I know Westler is doing that service. Tune on there a little bit to see, and they are, they are starting that to do that routinely through the community. I have no idea what kind of cost you.
Wouldn't hurt just to find out the cost and they would know if there's any kind of grant. I would think.
I would think that these people would know.
Is Rockville at all?
Not that I know of. I mean, they could be, I'm just not involved in it, but I, I mean, they have talked about it, I just don't know what they're doing as far as following through with it.
Is that one of what looking at was doing?
The U-Mac does a lot of their processing stuff and things like that, so I don't know, you know.
Well, that would be a question, well, I guess we know what our lines are from where we buy our water from, where it's coming from, we know what those lines are.
I'll, I'll just ask the question.
I'll say just to ask.
I had, yeah, we had no idea what the cost.
And we don't know if there, I mean, I'm sure there'd have to be some grants or something to subsidize it.
I think so.
They just said right now that there, you say there's gonna be some, but nothing's come down the pipe for sure yet.
I'll tell you, when companies are providing services, they're pretty good about helping you find ways to pay for their services.
They stay on top of that to know what's out there.
And this was for people that had 1,500 or less, is what this was for.
What else do you have?
Meeting with, uh, we were from last week, or last month's board member, board meeting. Water usage, it's staying about fairly good. And I gotta get Jason, which he didn't show up today. Do you have any water part, water pressure problems?
Uh, sometimes when I'm in the shower, it'll go way down and it'll come back.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah, every now and then it just doesn't.
Because Jill Rye said no, Larry Sharon said no.
I talked to Jason about that.
And he was on up there and live and I can't have my washer on and the kitchen sink on at all.
When did that start?
I just noticed it Thanksgiving morning. Is when I noticed it. How long ago?
No, see that's odd because I'm like, I'm down, I haven't noticed any, I have all kinds of things going.
And it, yeah, it's never been an issue for me until.
Well, it's kind of gone before Thanksgiving with us. I just thought it was just.
Which they're, they'd be on the end of the line down there, wouldn't they?
Well, it would be nice if you had a chance, just go up to your yard, that opposite side and just make sure that you're not seeing water.
Todd walked out there Thanksgiving morning and looked in our yard and Carol's yard and only thing, and he probed. And Carol's yard seemed softer than what it should have been considering we haven't had any rain. Well, we got a little bit rain at night, but he said that wasn't enough to make the ground as soft as what he thought it would be hard to grow in what it was. So that's why he thought we need to start over there because at one time she used to have water stand in the corner of her driveway after that fire. And we thought maybe with the fire trucks that they, you know, cracked the pipe or something, you know, the heavy trucks going across there, but then it kind of disappeared. And she, that's not been there for a while. And so we've not seen anything, but Todd said it has stayed greater over there. So that's what I thought.
I would think for them though, because the water I thought comes down past my house, because I know then it goes down to, because it would cross.
Crosses under the road somewhere.
Down, which I think it's over in that corner down there by Ingles and it crosses and then runs on down because their house before Ingles and the Mikes.
Mikes, yeah.
Those two were the last two built. Or no, next to the last two because then Kathy's right there on the corner. That one. Right across the street from me, that one was the last one right there.
Oh Kathy Dressler's?
Yes.
Yeah. That was that was.
The Connerly Place delivery.
Yes, the Connerly Place, that was the last one.
Was Thompson's up there, where she's at last?
No, mine was ended up, mine was before the other two houses, because it was Charles Woody's.
Because I thought when we looked up there in addition, because we looked between where we are and Dressler's house and I didn't remember a house being across the street then. And that would've been 81.
I can't remember, I worked on both of those houses, but I don't know.
Well, I lived, I mean, I watched Connerlys, I already moved in, I lived right there at Mom and Dad's place. Michael, well, where Mike lives. Yeah. They were, but the Connerlys then, right when we moved in. Swains was that before.
Swains we, we put in fairly early.
So they might, but their, his water meter is back across from their house.
Oh, Mike's is?
No, Dressler's is. It's back there across from their house.
Has she had it gross?
You what?
Does Dressler have it?
I haven't talked to her.
But you're not seeing in, in the metering?
Not, not really, no. So that's why I don't know what's pulling the water pressure.
That's what I'm wondering if that, like you said, if hers is back, I'm wondering if the line goes through Carol's probably back in that.
Oh, no, no, it comes down the road, no.
Come down the road, I wonder if it goes on that.
No, it comes across the fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant on cross.
At Shoemakers.
Shoemakers.
It comes to us.
Comes to you and then it goes down to us.
It tees across, we're, I wanted to end on line. So it goes on down to you, so we think it's something right from that's teeing down in front of Carol, between Jeff and Carol's.
But I would think where Swains, where they are, because that was way before the other two.
They go north or south side of the street, I mean.
I think we found out when I'm on the north side of the street.
Sort of my guess was something.
We decided that when, oh, when they put the gas line in. That's how we found that out, Ronnie had to come look.
Well, I think just see if it's gonna surface. The other option at some point is to get that company in for listening if, if we're seeing we do have.
And that's why I told Jason, I said, see if there's water in the meter over there and see if for some reason there's something that's about to leak, but I don't know what's pulling.
Well, see, all of that was fields that were in production, so they all had tiles and if it's going into a tile.
Well, they're confined.
Unless it just cuts the line.
And Todd said there's a tile that runs right along through there, because the drain cow that runs right along through there goes right into the lot down there, our lot. So he said, we'll never know if that's the case. Because he hooked into that line and went to that first rising. And he did that. So. It was just odd that, yeah, it just happened on Thanksgiving, well, I hadn't really, he's been home a lot, but I just had the washer on Thanksgiving morning and I went to the sink and there was nothing.
Oh wow.
But it's just the last two houses.
Carol and I are going to, other than hearing that she has on hers.
But it's not every time I'm in the shower, it's just.
Which house do you live in?
Z So House.
Swains.
The box of walls. We go by the previous owner.
Swains, I don't think they bought Swains' house.
So.
Well, that wouldn't tie, that wouldn't make sense.
That wouldn't make sense to go on that round circle.
That's not looped in there.
And I've never had water pressure issues, never.
I just know it's just tower.
And we don't, we don't go to the tower. Our water comes and it goes off before it ever hits the tower. Because that's what Larry first said. I said, oh, the tower's full, and I said, it don't matter Larry, I said, we don't go to the tower.
Did you go, did you live near ours when they had that big water leak out there in front of your house?
Right, when you're getting pressure.
No, that was already, that was already right there.
Right there at the corner.
Yeah, no, that was already down.
Yeah, somebody, yeah, somebody else.
I knew it wore across the street right there.
It goes, it goes down, it goes down around the corner and goes straight down to the side of my house, down to Bill's.
Toward your yard.
And then Bill thought it cut it.
Upon.
Because, because it cuts across the yard and on mine to the street. Because right over there is very.
So how's, how's Swains' or House?
See, that's when I'm thinking Bob Swains is hooked somewhere else.
And if you're not seeing it on your meter, that there's some way.
It didn't, it's on, it's on around the corner.
We're not showing really anything to the meter.
Halfway around the corner on my yard.
Well, you're not seeing overall.
And I think it ended up, and I thought Bill said that it came and crossed down there right by him and then over.
So, I mean, and that's why I said I'm not.
Goes across.
Feel concerned about it because I have water, which is like eight days once.
There's that tile.
Yeah.
Feeds all back behind me.
I don't know why this winter.
There's water always running.
Was your meter shod?
They don't have a big leak, I know, and that water be getting away.
They do, and they did gas or anything.
Because that water.
Because the gas came down on Larry's side, on the south side road.
Where Dressler's.
And came down to the corner of his place. And then he took it.
That's why.
And went on the west side of the house.
Dad always said, I said, for the tile, there was a spot.
So we have to make sure it's cleaned out.
Well, let's do that.
There's a place that you had to go clean, make sure it was cleaned out because they pulled.
Run through everything that we're trying to do.
So, you know, she didn't have water, I mean.
The calling.
She didn't have any water, I mean, she has no pressure. So where in the hell's that? But she got water back now, so what?
Then I have, for us to renew the fire protection. For the fire department. For 2024.
Okay.
So, all right, and we need to sign that and then you can take it over to the.
This is the same.
Yes, all I did was change the years. If I got them all changed, sure.
See the water Ingle family's field out here?
Yeah, I was gonna touch on that. They dug that up and they did find out it's the line that came from the old wellhouse, right? Because they used that wellhouse and that, but there was separation of several feet between the old town line and that. And so when they dug it up, they found out that line was leaking. Because we had checked our wellhouse and there's a valve between the main and the wellhouse and I checked it, it was off. There's two valves in that old pump house, they were both off. So I knew we were backfeeding.
That's why I was gonna ask, we weren't backfeeding.
No way, and then they came down, they found the old cut line.
The old line had set off.
Yeah, so then they had to go further west by probably 12 feet until they found where it was leaking. They were gonna put a plug, because the plug was leaking, they put a plug in that line and then a cap.
But they're using that water though, Ingle, Ingles are using that.
Yes.
Just Mike and Kathy and the shop.
Probably the shop.
Oh, Andy.
Andy's on it.
Yeah, so that's not. It's just Andy.
Saying that Dean's not. Clint's not, is he?
No, they're on us.
Okay.
No, one person, it's Andy, it's Andy, the shop and Mike and Kathy. The only three that's on it.
But yes, they found it, they, I talked to, to them while they were digging down there and they were, they had the parts to repair it, I haven't talked to them since Saturday or Sunday, whenever they were digging.
What, what, I drove by, I saw they had it dug up out there.
It, it's deep, it's like a good five feet deep.
Pretty, pretty good sized hole right there.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
I was noticing, I figured it was a drain tile, I mean, some tile was being, they were fixing. Is that probably what happened partly away Kathy's?
That corner was always wet right there.
That corner was, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was stopping at the store the day.
Because that was like last spring.
Yeah, but it was coming.
But it was the back end, yeah.
The other side.
So, and then here's our. I'll get stuff transferred over this one.
All the initials.
Yeah, it's just initials, our internal controls basically.
That thing wouldn't leak a lot of water, because that's a long time, it ain't wet there.
Kathy said, Bill said Kathy and Mike did not have any water pressure problems.
Really?
I don't think it was a very large leak because what they dug out, there must be a clay layer. They got down there about five feet and it wasn't saturated there. So everything was just coming up and laying on the ground, so it wasn't a very big leak. Even when they got into where the line was, it was just kind of trickling out.
I just knew, I can't talk that lake wet, you know, the time they planned, at the time they found it out.
Thing went around it and it was still there.
Yeah.
But yeah, Bill said that they didn't have any water pressure problems. He said, we're gonna be anxious, find out what we find. So. And then Todd had stopped them and talked to them too, so.
Those numbers are looking around.
Yeah. Totally not had any major.
Yeah.
That's why I was like, do I really wanna call you back?
Yeah.
Do I want water pressure? And that's all I have, I think.
Tom?
Just a little bit more about the lead service line. Once we get the, the smidl done, I didn't, part of what they want is you have to notify your customer.
Oh, yeah.
If there's a lead service line. If there's a galvanized line that requires replacement, which they say is or ever has been downstream from the lead service line or lines you don't know could go lead to mine. or lines you don't know, but are living on. You have to notify the customer within 30 days of the smelldow. And then you got to notify item that that was made. So just another part of it just keeps going.
Well, I think with Dale, when you said, if we could knock out 80% of them or more, then later on we can look at that last few we create.
And that's kind of what they're suggesting you do.
Anyone, visitors, anybody have anything? Board have anything else? Okay, word there.